So it's 6:15. Welcome all to the July 28, 2020, open session meeting of the Air Planning Board. We do have a forum as I can see online. Hey, we got, we have everybody here? Yes, we do. Fantastic. Good evening, all. How are you?
Good.
Well, thank you.
Doing well.
Great, thank you. Okay, um, may I have a, uh, a motion for the, approve the agenda, please?
So moved.
Thank you. A second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on the agenda? And I'd like to ask a question.
Yes.
Yes, Jonathan?
You're probably, maybe I'm, I'm jumping ahead of you, but I'm thinking that since certain materials didn't arrive for 14 Washington and Air Solar 2B, perhaps that would give us more time to give consideration to the issues surrounding the John Carroll Reserve.
Thank you.
Would that be possible?
Thank you. I was going to ask that question right now, Jonathan. Mr. Burchard, how are you this evening?
Very good, sir, and members of the board.
Good evening, Kyle. How was, you were in training today, I heard?
Uh, yeah, I've been in training for over a week now, and I'm not getting anything done. So, um, I think this suggestion makes a lot of sense. I can give you a brief update summary where we are on that, as well as the fire station, if it pleases the board.
Um, I think we'd like to have information. Would that be okay with the board? We've been fairly brief. Um, so what I would like to suggest, Kyle, and that's, and I want to actually stay with the agenda as we have it. If I can make that suggestion, and that is we'll do the A and R for 9 Harvard Road, and I'd like to get the gardeners, um, finished up. I think we're in good shape for them. So Kyle, be a few minutes before we get to you. Is that okay?
Sounds good.
I appreciate that.
I'll save bandwidth.
Okay, um, so, uh, we will touch on those topics, Jonathan, but I think they may be brief, okay?
Sure.
Great. So having had that discussion, all in favor of going forward with the agenda as it's presented?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, fantastic. A and R for 9 Harvard Road, one new lot 9A and parcel A, Davey Ross Associates. Do we have anybody here on behalf of, um, the applicant? No?
Doesn't look like it.
I'm sorry?
It does not appear so.
Okay, um, so, uh, how do you want to proceed, Mark? How should we proceed?
Uh, well, I can, they don't have to be here, but I can give a brief description of the A and R. Basically, uh, there's a lot on Harvard Road. It's a pre-existing non-conforming lot created in 1950. It has 70 feet of frontage on Harvard Road, whereas the zoning states it should have 100, but as it was created in 1950, before that requirement was in place, it's a pre-existing non-conforming lot. And what they desire to do is transfer a small parcel of 1,311 square feet to be adjoining lot. A lot of the, uh, purchase. And, uh, so it's a relatively simple A and R. I recommend that because of the pre-existing non-conforming nature of the lot, that the planning board make a finding before endorsing the plan if it's willing to do so. And my recommended finding would be the Air Planning Board recognizes that Lot 9A at 9 Harvard Road is non-conforming due to insufficient frontage in the A2 zoning district, but endorses this A and R as a transfer of parcel A at 1,311 square feet is not making the lot more non-conforming. So that's the key thing is not to make it more non-conforming. Otherwise, it's, it's a very simple thing that we've seen many times.
Um, has anybody had a chance to take a look at this, either through Google or go over and take a look at the property?
Yeah, I looked at it.
Okay, I looked at it also. Um, I was hoping to ask the proponent, but it looks to me like there is, on that parcel A, there may have already been constructed a portion of a driveway. And I think they're cleaning that up. That's my guess, is supposition. Without actually going on the property to figure it out, but, uh, with, uh, Mark, I wanted to double check the square footage shown on a lot of 12,353. Is that pre or post removing the 1311?
Uh, that's pre, I believe.
That's before? So it's going to drop down to 11,300 and...
That's post.
That's post? Okay.
That's post.
So it'll still, it'll remain 12,353 square feet, approximately a quarter acre. What is the minimum acreage? I don't recall for that area. Do you recall? I couldn't read this.
Uh, yes.
12,000 square feet, correct?
12,000.
Um, any discussion from board members about going forward with the findings Mark proposed?
I'm good.
Okay. Anybody else? Nathan?
No, you, that was my question, was the minimum lot size.
Okay.
You want to make it more non-conforming?
I, I was wondering about the language for that. Increasing its non-conformity. Okay, um, so I guess I would accept a motion along the lines of, uh, planning board approves the A, um, I'm sorry, the planning board accepts the A and R with the following finding and Mark's, um, Mark just read it for us. Does that sound good to folks?
Yes.
Yep.
Yeah, would you like to? Yeah, I'll make the motion. I'll read it formally for the record.
Thank you.
Uh, we make the following finding in advance of, of acknowledging approval for the A and R. The Air Planning Board recognizes that Lot 9A at 9 Harvard Road is non-conforming due to insufficient frontage in the A2 zoning district, but endorses this A and R as a transfer of parcel A at 1,311 square feet is not making the lot more non-conforming. And thus, uh, do, what's the right language? We say, do we approve or we, what's the verb I'm looking for?
Endorse for an A and R.
Endorse.
We endorse, we endorse the A and R as submitted and discussed by Town Planner Mark Archimbo.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Nathan. Moving second, any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Extensions? Sounds like it passed unanimously. First off, we'll listen to that. Thank you. Okay. Uh, continue the public hearing for 35 Park Street. We left this on the agenda at the last meeting, if I recall, because we still had some signatures to do and some filing with the town. Do we need to open this public hearing, please?
Uh, the public hearing, I believe, was opened, still open, but continued, but, yeah, the board should formally open it before closing it.
Okay, can I have a motion, please?
I'd make a motion to open the public hearing for 3 to 5 Park Street.
Thank you.
Seconded.
Thank you very much. Moving second, any further discussion? Hearing none. Let's go forward, um.
We have to vote, don't we? Do I have to say a?
Oh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, um, so Heather, did you receive the, um, signed documents today?
Yes, received them yesterday. They were brought to the clerk and they've been stamped in.
Okay, great. Any questions from the gardeners about this? I think we're complete.
No, I, yeah, I thank you all very much. As I have the last couple of meetings, I thank you very much for your time, your, your vote of confidence and your graciousness and understanding. I did drop off an envelope in the lockbox for Ms. Tamsen tonight about quarter to six. It was a fee, I guess I neglected to pay, but let's secure the lockbox and, uh, if I can just get a copy of, uh, the, uh, the, uh, document that's filed at Tom Clark. I mean, I get that from the Tom Clark, but Tom Gibbons, my attorney, instructed me to get it, wait the 20 days and then, uh, the clerk certifies 20 days and hopefully no appeal. Get it to him and he'll be brought there. But just if we could get a copy from Ms. Tamsen in the interim, via email, whatever it is, or I can run down the town hall meter outside, whatever's good for everybody.
Well, I can give you a, I can give you the unsigned copy. That way I don't risk the chance of it getting, um, recorded until the appeal period's over. And then when the appeal period's over, I'll give you a call about picking up the stamped one.
All right, that's fine with me. Whatever's good for you, call me anytime. I'm just like about a mile away from the town hall and you can be down there in five minutes.
Thank you, Bob. I think we all know where you live, man. So we'll find you. And thanks for dropping off that check today. Anything else on this topic?
First about it, but my fault. I thought I paid it earlier, but thanks for trusting me, everybody.
Fantastic. I think that brings this issue to a close. Am I correct?
Yes, I believe so.
Okay, thank you. Um, with that, let's close the public hearing for 3 to 5 Park Street.
Move that we close the hearing for 3 to 5 Park Street.
Thank you. Thank you. Moving second, any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
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 That was an interesting experience. Thank you very much, Bob and Tom. Thank you very much for your patience with us.
Well, listen, thank you very much for all your understanding. Take, take as long as you need. Yeah, we really appreciate it. We really do. Thank you all very much.
That brings us to next on our agenda. Kyle, Mr. Burchard.
Hello, sir.
So you're on for three topics. Do you have the agenda with you?
I, I do, and, um, I will have to hand off the third topic to, uh, Cal Goldsmith. Oh, no, I'm sorry. There's a fourth topic, which is Cal's, the first three of mine. The first two being the special permit at 14 Washington Street and site plan review of 14 Washington Street. My apologies to the board. I have not, um, uh, completed the task of providing stormwater management drainage calculations and designs to the DPW to be able to review. We are at that endpoint though, this week to get that out. Uh, also the configuration and structure and framework of the, uh, various waivers and special permits to put this in the proper light for the board's approval, as well as our parking management plan, um, to reduce, uh, the parking requirement in this downtown transect. Um, is, is still in the works. I am working on that as we speak and, um, I believe that that will also be ready this week to be able to get out for DPW review and the board's review, so that we may be able to proceed at the next planning board hearing.
Thank you. And so is that the special permit and the site plan review?
That would be proposed for those applications, as well as the addition of the Page Moore parking lot, which is in conjunction as a solution to, uh, the, this area's parking needs. All that.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I was just, we have it as two separate items on the agenda. Just want to make sure that we covered them both. Okay, thank you. Um, do you want to jump forward and talk about the amended site plan for Air Solar 2B, please?
If I may, that would be great. This is brief. Uh, we've had hearings with the Conservation Commission, discussion with the peer review consultant, and we are at the endpoint of that as well from a, in a, from a conceptual standpoint. There is the string crossing that is the major contentious issue, which, uh, believe we have the framework worked out regulatory, uh, regulatorily. The NHGSP has reviewed the project, is, is prepared to issue a no-take letter. Uh, we are seeking the involvement of any entity that would take on, um, maintenance responsibilities of the conservation restriction that is a part of the application now. So that is all in process, but I believe also we should be able to have a reasonable discussion at the next planning board hearing about that topic as well.
Thank you. And I believe that's August 11th would be our next meeting, if I'm not mistaken. Uh, one of the questions I have, excuse me for a moment, um, I don't know when the next Conservation Commission meeting is. Is that critical? Is that critical path to our meeting or? In your eyes?
If I may, Mr. Chairman, the next CONCOM hearing is on August 13th.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and so I don't know that this board's view is contingent upon that, but, uh, we, you know, may, may not close at that point, but we would hopefully be bringing it to a close in August.
Thank you. I was just curious about that. Um, I appreciate it. And, uh, okay, thank you. Uh, any questions for Mr. Burchard on any of the, uh, the 14 Washington Street or the Air Solar Plan from the board, please?
I have a question.
Please, Mr. Disken.
So on the 14 Washington Street, have you submitted any updated drawings that we should be reviewing or? Okay, so nothing is there at this point in time?
No, I apologize. It's been, um, I don't know what's been happening, but it's been quite busy. Um, and also work out the, the language and structure is just taking a little bit of time. So nothing is updated yet. There are, I will have, uh, the, the, however, I guess I should make, mention that the configuration of the, the walks, the walls, the curbing, the, the, whether it's pavers or some kind of other decorative concrete for those spaces on Washington Street, all those suggestions that I, that I recall receiving from the board have been implemented on the plan. And I thought I had provided an update depicting those. Nothing substantial has been changed from that point. Uh, had some additional correspondence with the Massachusetts Architectural Access Board about, uh, handicap spaces for this type of development, which is actually, there are no handicap space requirements for this size development unless there is, uh, someone who rents an apartment who requests that there be access. We've made accommodation on the site plan to provide that access, but in the meantime, uh, we could leave that unstriped and unsigned so that there would be effectively an additional parking space. I don't know how the board feels about that. Topic of discussion we will be able to talk about, but it's, um, it's not required by the Architectural Access Board for that. So, um, things have been, you know, moving along on different fronts and, uh, so we, there will be an updated plan. There has not been one yet.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, one of the concerns I had, Kyle, is how we're gonna, is how you were going, or how the proponent was going to handle, uh, the necessity for a handicap, uh, for, um, hate to call him handicap access, but for access for parking and stuff like that. And you've given me a little bit of information now. Um, I'd just be interested at the time to see what the expectation, what the expected solution would be should it come up in the future.
Sure, Mr. Chairman. Oh, if I may just, the, there's no, because it's an existing building and a retrofit of the existing building, there's no, um, accessibility requirements to get into this, the building. Um, and because of the number of units, uh, is the reason I understood, um, from, from the discussions and correspondence I have with the Architectural Access Board, that that's, that's the cutoff, the reason why there's not, and I guess that's in conjunction with no accessibility requirements inside the building, why there's not an accessible space required unless requested, as, as, uh, Board Member Murray pointed out, there can be other accessibility needs which would necessitate a spot, um, for loading, uh, of that nature. And, um, if that, if that comes about, we've made accommodation on the site for space as well as grading, as well as the ramp that would be needed to get from the loading space up onto the walk. But then the person would have to go upstairs in order to reach their destination. So I, you know, how that works is, is certainly open to the purview of the board.
Thank you. Any further questions from members of the board? I think I'll speak for the whole board when we sit on the edge of our seats waiting for the drawings.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Kyle. Um, so we've covered the, uh, 14 Washington and Air Solar 2B. Brings us to the next item on our agenda. And I'm sorry that I'm looking down. I haven't quite figured out how to put the camera somewhere where it can track.
Jeff?
Yes?
Real quick, you need to get motions to continue, all three of those?
Oh, thank you.
Yep.
May I have a motion please to continue, uh, the public hearings for? Uh, let's do them individually. Continue the public hearing for the special permit 14 Washington Street until the next meeting?
So moved.
Thank you. Second?
Seconded.
Fantastic. Moving seconded. Uh, any further discussion? Hearing none? Yes? I'm sorry, go ahead.
So do we need to get a letter from the applicant and check the dates regarding this? Have we run, are we gonna run out of time and our needs to act on these applications? Typically in the past, I've seen letters that have come in, you know, that have asked for an extension and granted, we grant the extension, but I'm not sure if Mark's got something like that going or not.
My understanding is that due to the Municipal Relief Act that has to do with the COVID pandemic, uh, that, uh, the normal deadlines do not apply as long as the state of emergency is still in effect. So, you know, I believe that we can continue without a formal extension.
Good question, um.
I, I could even read the, uh, the section from that act that says, uh, what?
No, I, I understand, Mark, the act, and I understand we've been operating underneath it. I'm gonna ask that, um, I think it's a good question, Ken. I don't know if we can solve it right now. Um, Kyle, do you think you guys would be open to if we requested a letter?
Um, if we can handle this by email correspondence, if that's acceptable to the board, or if we need to write a letter, that would be fine. If we, if I can work with Mark on the nature of the letter and what it needs to say, that would be acceptable.
Yeah, I do want to make sure, Ken, that we don't run out of time on this one. Please, I appreciate your suggestion. And Mark, do you mind, um, taking a look into this?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Yes, you mind, or yes, you'll take a look into it?
Yes, I'll take that.
So I appreciate you taking a look into it. Thank you very much. And, um, I'd ask also for the Air Solar 2B. That way we just keep it moving. I mean, that's, I think it's everyone's intention to move it forward. Let's just make sure we cross the Ts and dot the Is. Fair enough? Thank you. So, uh, I need to continue, uh, motion, so is moved to continue the public hearing for the special permit for 14 Washington Street. Uh, seconded, we had discussion. All in favor of continuation?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? No, thank you. Uh, may I have a motion, please, for the site plan review for 14 Washington Street? With the caveat that with the caveat that it's understood that a letter will, will be brought to us should it need to be to keep the extension going. Fair enough?
With that caveat.
Thank you. So moved seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And finally, continue the review, uh, continue the review for the amended site plan for Air Solar 2B. Same caveat. If we need a letter, we'll get it based on the date.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moving seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Boy, we can move stuff through, can't we? Uh, thank you, Heather, for catching me. It's really hard to read people's expressions on their faces by Zoom. Oftentimes, sitting in the room, I'll be looking around the room and seeing who's kind of getting nervous about stuff as I move forward. Um, you know, I'll, you know, I'll figure this out, guys, eventually. Um, next on our agenda is a discussion regarding the planning board endorsement of John Carroll Reserve subdivision for 54, 56 Littleton Road. Do we need to actually open this, or where are we with this one, Mark?
No, it's just a discussion.
Okay.
Discussion, yes.
Okay. Um, Mr. Goldsmith, you're here for this one?
Yes, I am.
Thank you.
So we are requesting, uh, just simply the signing of the plans. Uh, the plan has already been approved. You voted it many months ago. Uh, we're now looking to get the, uh, the Mylar Plan of Land signed and the subdivision plan signed so we can go on record with this and, uh, the applicant can move ahead to to sell a property to a, a local developer who is lined up to buy it and build it.
Mm-hmm.
Um, which was the plan all along. Um, there were some conditions on the, in the decision. Uh, we feel like we've complied with all those conditions, uh, but two of those conditions involved a bond. Putting a bond up and notwithstanding the decision in the way it's written in the, uh, let me, let me just start from basics on this. So for people that are fairly new to the board, they may not know some of this stuff. So Chapter 41 of Mass General Law, Section K, 81K through 81GG, uh, and there are a lot of other sections, but those sections are otherwise known as the subdivision control law, fondly known as subdivision control law. Section 81U, uh, talks about approval, modification, or disapproval of a plan by the board free requisites for decision. In that, in those discussions, they get to the point where, uh, about in the middle of that section, it says, "Before endorsement of approval of a plan, the planning board shall require that the construction of ways and the installation of municipal services be secured by one or in part by one and in part by another of the methods described in the following clauses 1 through 4. Which method or combination of methods may be selected and from time to time varied by the applicant." These four sections, very briefly, are by a bond, by a deposit of money or negotiable securities, which is also a very painful way to go, uh, by a covenant, uh, which I'll talk about in a minute, or by a tri-party agreement, which I don't think anybody uses those anymore because they were very ineffective. When, uh, when the last crash, a tri-party agreement, banks are not willing to fund the money that they said they would do, and so they, they were proved to be pretty ineffective. So your DPW director has said that he would like to see a bond. And he came up with an amount of about $860,000. Um, our clients have gone to bid with the project of three different contractors, and they got numbers between 475 and 525. So it was a pretty strong disparity between the numbers that we're actually getting, uh, and what the DPW director has estimated. So if we do go with the bond, um, which, um, I'll talk more about, but if we do go with a bond, we ask that, uh, we try to mitigate it somewhat, maybe meet somewhere in the middle or, or get it down closer to what our, our, um, construction estimates have been. And if maybe we could provide you with those. Uh, however, before we do that, and I, I know that, that your DPW director wants the bond, however, in state law, it actually says that, that it's available, uh, in, any of these methods are available by choice of the applicant.
Mm-hmm.
So we had submitted a covenant, and basically what the covenant does is it, it allows the planning board to, to control any sale in the subdivision or any construction of a house in the subdivision until such time as all the utilities are completed and the road is in and all the sidewalks are in, the lights, the vinyl paving, uh, and everything else that's been done. Uh, which actually gives the planning board a great deal of control over what happens out there. Um, if, instead of that, we just merely posted a bond, then basically that would put the planning, that would put the town, uh, as the DPW director thinks, in the driver's seat because his major concern, and I can understand it completely, his major concern is that when he has to pick up the pieces from a failed project, he needs the money to do that. And that's what a bond would give him. Assuming that he could pull the bond and that the, the legal wrangling around that is not simple sometimes, but assuming he could get that money, he could finish the project. But my point with board is, does that put you in a better position than having a covenant? Because, let me give you the worst case scenario, and I've never seen it happen. But the worst case scenario is you get to bond, the developer goes in and sells all the lots in advance because he roughs in the road, sells all the lots in advance, and then walks away. So now you, the town is in a position of being obligated to pull the bond and finish the road so that all those houses, so that all those people can build their houses because they have, they have sold the property and they're obligated, and the town is obligated to do that. My question to you is, why would you ever put yourself in that position? Now with a covenant, let's say the developer goes in, he roughs out part of the road, and he says, I don't want to do this anymore, and he walks. Now with a covenant, let's say the developer goes in, he roughs out part of the road, and he says, "I don't want to do this anymore," and he walks away. Don't watch it, I'm telling you. Probably asked for some...
Excuse me? There's so much noise in the background. I'm having difficulty hearing Cal because somebody has something on in the background. I don't know who it is, but could people double-check to make sure that there's no media running behind them? Because...
It's just Kyle.
Thank you.
Cindy, could you...
Jonathan hasn't gotten... Jonathan, I'm gonna mute, tell me if it goes away.
Yeah, it's better now, thank you.
It's the kitchen next to my office, sorry.
Okay. I just was having difficulty following Cal there for a moment. Sorry about that, Cal, go ahead, please.
You're also breaking up, Cal, so, yeah, I'll go unmute.
So, and I should preface this whole discussion by saying that my client has said, "I want that plan signed tonight. If we have to agree to a bond, we'll agree to a bond." So this is not about arguing. I just want you to understand fully what the decision you're making tonight. So if there's a covenant in place, they cannot sell any lot, they cannot build on any lot until such time, according to the covenant, that the utilities and the roads and the sidewalks and everything else are completed. Now, that's not realistic, that's not usually the way it's done. But what does happen is they avail them, the builders avail themselves of the ability to switch between a covenant and a bond after they've spent the majority of the money on the road. So rather than bonding $500,000 or $600,000 for the road, they do the covenant, and they hand it to the board and say, "You now have control over all the lots in my subdivision. I can't do anything on any of them until I get the road built." Then they go in and build the road. They get it to binder, which is typically what a building inspector would like to see for proper access, so they can go get their building permits. And at that point, they come to the board and say, "You've got to let me build on my lots now because I've got the road to binder. I've gone to the DPW, we've agreed on an estimate to finish the road construction." That is $200,000 or $150,000. Usually for final paving, the sidewalks, the planting, trees, and the lights, and anything else they've got to put in their signage and whatnot. Final paving. And they bond that amount. And then come to the planning board and say, "Please release my covenant. I have bonded the completion of the road, so now I can start building on the lots." And at that point, if they walk away, at that point, the town can pull that bond, but it's a much smaller bond, much easier to pull, and there's much less work to be done. Basically, you could hire a paving contractor, come in and pave the subdivision and put lights in and whatnot, and they're done. But also at that point, the logic is, why would anybody walk away? They've done all that work, they've invested all that money, they've got to get it back by selling the lots. So it puts the town in a much better position, in my eyes, because at the time that you actually go to start construction, you've got a bond to complete the rest of the road. Now, I understand there have been issues with covenants, and and my advice to this board, if you had asked me before some of the other subdivisions in town had proceeded, I would have said, "I would never use a covenant as a bond." In other words, I would never give partial releases for specific lots under a covenant. In my mind, the covenant is either all or nothing. You either have the covenant on all the lots, so you've got the developer and the builder firmly in hand, and you can control all those lots, or you've got a bond that releases all the lots. But there's no mixing of the two. You're like, you don't give up three lots out of the covenant because they've got the road to binder, and then give up another three lots because they put in the mailboxes, or, you know. That's just the wrong way to use a covenant. In my mind, a covenant is either all or it's nothing. And so basically, when they say, "I want to start building houses," you come to that, they come to the board and they say, "We'd like you to release the covenant." You say, "That's fine, have you agreed on the bond with the DPW? And do you have a number for us? And have you posted the bond for that number?" And at that point, you release the covenant. That's my advice, that's the way I've always seen it done. I think it actually gives the planning board more control over what happens on that site than just getting a covenant right, or getting a bond right from the beginning. But if your decision, I know your DPW director would disagree because he's all about being held responsible for building. But the other, there's one other thing I want to tell you. If you have a covenant, and you get partway through the road construction, and the guy decides he's gonna walk, the DPW director's gonna say, "But then how do I finish the road?" And what I'm gonna say is, you don't. It's not your responsibility. They have sold no lots, there's nobody else that's being hurt by this, there's nobody else that's under obligation, even if they've got a deposit on the lot. That's not your responsibility. There is nobody living there, there is no reason why this town would ever go in and finish that road.
Thank you.
You wouldn't do that. You wouldn't do it.
Thank you.
That's my thoughts, you guys can do what you want, we'll abide by whatever your decision is. If you do decide to go with a bond, we'd like to get it down a little bit further.
Yep. So, there's been a little bit of discussion about this, catch the board up on it today. Because of the special conditions that were done back in October when we were working on this in the John Carroll Reserve, we included in there two references to a bond. The special condition is number four, and the special condition is number seven. And so, the applicant is under... They have to be, we've got to deal with these, these two. So that's kind of where we stand, and had some conversation around that today. Mr. Diskin, do you want to say anything to catch up the rest of the board of what's going on?
I guess I would like to say a few things, yes. Okay, so, thanks, Cal, for the explanation. I think the language, and I looked at that special condition, and the language in there doesn't specify... I don't believe it specifies the timeframe of the bond, does it? So the applicant is rep, shall meet with the, da-da-da-da, establish a performance bond, and propose curly circle, da-da-da-da. So that doesn't really tell us exactly when the timing of that bond is required. Is that correct? Do you think that's, you read that, Jeff, that way?
I do read it the same way you do.
And then at the seven, it says the applicant shall file a bond with the town of, with the amount to be determined by the Department of Public Works Superintendent and the town planner. So, that probably lacks clarity because it actually needs the other party, it needs the developer's input as well. It can't just come from DPW and the town planner. So there's no question about that, that's probably a little vague and not that clear, so...
If I may, just to touch on that point. When we put the special conditions together, it was not, I don't think it was in the... Our imagination didn't include that the project would be sold off to somebody else. Typical fashion, when a developer comes forward, they sit down with the DPW and they say, "This is what, it's gonna cost me X to build the roads." And the DPW would ask for a portion of money, 10% of X or something along those lines, based on... It is basically, excuse me. The DPW would assess the cost of it based upon the engineer's cost estimates. The engineer's cost estimates here were being done by the DPW because of the nature upon which the numbers got to us. Is that clear to people, or did I just confuse, did I muddy the waters even more?
You muddied it more.
Sorry.
Well, I'll tell you, the way I see it is that, I like the explanation that Mr. Goldsmith gave. I think the end result is that if the covenant, if Cal feels that the covenant that we were given is an all-or-nothing covenant, it's quite different from the partial releases that we've been doing for other subdivisions. Interestingly enough, he was involved with some of these other subdivisions, so his comment about, you know, letting that go that way, mate, you know, I'm not so sure about that, he probably should have brought this up a while ago, unless you...
If I may, I was not involved in the security of those decisions or the partial releases. That happened after the approval.
Just the approval part of it. But incidentally, there happened to be projects that you did the engineering on, so...
We absolutely did, and I know exactly which one you're talking about. I heard the whole sad story today, I was not even aware of that until I heard it.
Okay, so the long and short of it is that I think the explanation you gave is clear, and if the language of this covenant is approved by our town council, that and the town planner, that this is a solid covenant that basically is an all-or-nothing covenant, that changes my thinking about the partial releases. On top of that, the, I'd like to talk a little bit about the budget that he alluded to, and I have a couple of comments on that as well. And when I did the mathematics on this, I have built roads, I've built miles of roads. When I did the calculation, I just started with the total price divided by the linear footage, and came out with some really outrageous number. And I would have guessed it would be like 350 to 450 tops per lineal foot. So then I looked a little closer, and I see several areas that I think are an exception to the rule. And one of them in particular is $190,000 for the grinder pump system, which lands on each of the lots. So I'd take $190,000 off, right off the bat. And I dispute the cost of the swales and trenches at whatever, $45,000. So, there's a couple of hundred thousand dollars there easily that might be overestimated. I think that fell either to the lots rather than to the subdivision road, or the work of the road. And if you were bidding it as a GC and you were bidding it as a developer, you'd specify the work that would be tied into the road construction and break it out from the lots and carry that as a separate, you know, piece of work. And also the fact that the contingency is, you know, really an unusually large number and contains engineering. So, you know, I got to think that most of the engineering for the construction has been complete. There is field work, obviously, to do, of course, but I'd be of the, I think it would be a fair compromise to go with the full, the good covenant that guarantees it's an all-or-nothing covenant, and the concept that we would put a bond on the job at such time as we feel that the, you know, road has reached the, you know, the stage where we can have an accurate feel of what's left for construction of the road, and hopefully that satisfies the DPW director. That's, you know, kind of my feeling on the thing. Or is my feeling on the thing at this point in time.
Can I leave in here?
Yes, please do.
Yeah, I'm also intrigued by, I was really intrigued by Cal's approach with the idea of the all-or-nothing covenant, covenant rather than piecemeal. And I really appreciate, like the idea that, you know, you built a binder to the point where an inspector can get in, confirm progress to date, and then we can have an intelligent assessment of how much is really remains for completion and bond that much smaller portion. And it sounds reasonable to me. You know, it sounds logical, and it sounds like we'd have considerable more control in that process than the drib and drab piecemeal covenant dismissal process. So, looks good, looks interesting to me.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, I'm muted, go ahead.
Just, I wanted to jump in also when Ken was talking about the spreadsheet here with all the costs. It, you know, is it our responsibility to negotiate that price? Or is this what Item 4 is really talking about, that the superintendent and the applicant are to meet? And would that resolve that?
Mark's got his finger up, Mark can speak to that also, yes.
Yeah. The intent of Condition 4 is to have the applicant's representative meet with the public works director and myself, and perhaps a planning board representative, to discuss that. And, you know, we structured that language for that very reason, that we feel that, you know, a bond amount should be a negotiated decision.
And I will temper that comment with this. The bond amount is typically based upon the engineers who work for the builder to do the work. We don't actually have that estimate in hand right now. I don't know, it's as low as 495. It's interesting, Cal, if I take those two numbers that Mr. Diskin just talked about, the contingency and the 190 off, we're at 498 roughly.
And as I said, they were 475 to 5 and 1/4.
Exactly.
So they were all pretty consistent.
And I went through this with, I went through, I did not go through this line by line with Mark Wetzel, but in our conversation over the phone, I didn't have a copy of it with me. He did mention that some of the numbers were higher, some were lower than what he's used to seeing in the workplace, but we are in kind of a unique position. We did set the language of the special conditions back in October. Things have changed. This is a project that's being sold, not being done by the applicant. There's going to be an engineer in the future. Mr. Diskin's done a heck of a lot of work on trying to come up with language for this that would work. I think there's probably some sort of middle ground that's going to make everybody happy. Ken, do you want me to, I took the language you gave me, you just don't want to propose that?
Well, I think we've got two things to talk about, right? Which is a very, we're looking at the covenant now, Cal. The language of the covenant, okay? Just to clarify, Mr. Chairman, I was just clarifying, sorry.
Yes, please do.
And in the very first paragraph, excuse me, not the very first paragraph, the second paragraph with the caps, it starts now, "Therefore," there's definitely an error there where it says, "In consideration of the planning board approving the plan without requiring a performance bond." So that wording is, I don't believe belongs there because there's definitely probably going to be a performance bond at some point in the future.
Yeah, that's true. Think about what this document is saying. This document is saying, "In the, in consideration of you not requiring a performance bond," then you go all the way down to the bottom of it. It talks about, "Upon final completion of the construction of all ways and the installation of all utilities." I mean, this document is set up to allow that if this covenant gets signed, it can go all the way through final construction, including the plans, the construction plans, and all the rest of it. So this does not contemplate a change. This document doesn't have to, this document's got to stand on its own to obligate the whole process for covenant. But then under the state law, under 81U, what it says is, "From time to time, it can be varied, or you can use one method and then the other." So, basically, this document then says, or the state law then says, they can come in and substitute a bond for this document. But this document doesn't, this is not a homogenation of the two. This is strictly the covenant. And it's written that way, so it's strictly the covenant, and it can be held to those standards all the way through. And, you know, notice, it does talk about, in it, it talks about the undersigned will not convey or sell a lot on the number 2 on any such lot until the construction of ways and installation to adequately serve such lot have been completed. So, boards have interpreted that to mean they can do a piecemeal release of lots. However, it also says, "To adequately serve such lots," that's really a planning board determination. And it says, "In accordance with all the following things," which also includes the definitive subdivision plan. So basically, you could say, "It's not adequate until it's complete." Because we, you know, we're not settling for a partial job. We, you know, it's adequate when the subdivision is built according to the plans.
Okay, so I'd move on then from that sentence, Jeff, to the sentence that I recommend be added in this paragraph.
Yeah. So, jumping forward, and Cal, actually, so I also got stuck on the requiring a performance bond in the second paragraph in the first page. And I understand your, I believe I understand your description, explanation, thank you very much. I am having difficulty, there's too much water today. Your explanation. So moving forward to number 7. And there were a couple of questions I had, and I discussed this with Mr. Diskin. And what I'm going to do is turn on screen sharing. And I'm not sure...
Jeff, are you saying number 7 in the covenant?
Number 7 in the covenant, yes, okay. And I am trying to, I'm not sure how to share the screen.
At the bottom, it should say, share screen.
It's the green button?
I've got the green button, oh, you know what, I clicked on the thing next to it, I'm sorry. So, hopefully, you are now seeing a Word document, okay? So, Calvin, this is the conversation that we had earlier today, and it's just graphically in front of us. Number 7 says, "Upon final completion of the construction of all ways and the installation of all municipal services, da-da-da." And the question I have there is, and it's a, jot it down, it says, "Final completion." We talk about binder as opposed to final, which is top code. Is that correct? Or is it assumed binder? When it gets to final completion?
Final completion assumes everything.
Okay.
Again, this document contemplates everything being done.
Okay.
Right.
So, Mr. Diskin suggests adding, if you... So, um, Mr. Diskin suggests adding, if you, adding the sentence below.
It becomes the second sentence.
The, the one the arrow points to, can you see it?
Yeah.
Okay, I just thought it'd be easier to put in front of everybody than try and, it's, it's.
Final inspection required to find, final inspection approved by air of all construction installation startup. Operation emission services install order systems installed said ways or ruins. Seems reasonable. I mean, I think that's all implied by saying you've got to complete it according to the plans, but I don't think there's anything unreasonable in that.
I appreciate that. So thank you, so that is a, a, so, okay. I can send that language to you, okay? So the rest of the board members understand what is going on, any questions about that? Thank you, I'm going to unshare the screen if I can. There we go. How's that work? Is it gone?
Yes, it is.
As soon as I clicked on screen sharing, you all go away. So I, I can't, you know, I'm dealing with my desktop here, so anyway. So I appreciate that, Cal. I think this makes, uh, this gives us, uh, a, a level of comfort with it. I am a little bit uncomfortable about saying no performance bond in the first paragraph. I'm going to go with what the board feels about that. So basically, let me see if I have any other questions on this, I don't, I don't think so. Just to, uh, tie it all up and, tie it all up. There will be an opportunity to post a bond at some point in the construction process. That remains available to the town.
But actually available to the applicant according to what I think.
Exactly, to be able to the applicant.
To the parties, yes, thank you.
Which I guarantee you they will want to take advantage of.
Yeah.
Because you're not going to build all those houses on finished pavement, that just never happens. Let's do it all up.
Okay.
Ooh, easy Ken.
Yeah, right. A blue fly from my blueberry.
I love Zoom, Zoom is great.
I, I missed, I'm sorry, I missed, I was away, I was somewhere else.
You were attacked by a killer fly.
Oh, okay. Do we have further discussion for the questions from anybody on the board about this?
I think it would be advantageous to get, um, and I, we may have it in our subdivision, oh, but the subdivision regulations don't apply, excuse me. We did put it in our subdivision regulations that we could request the schedule of values, I think, from, uh, you know, construction values somewhere along the line. But maybe as a goodwill gesture, we could get a copy of the, the bid, you know, from the applicant and attach it, maybe not attach it as an exhibit, but at least put it in a file for now and use it as a reference for a schedule of values for the project and if we could refer to it later if we felt like it.
I don't think that'd be a problem. I don't think they'd want to give you the actual contract, but I think they can give you a summary of all the, the different line items, so you'd have that, yeah.
Just a schedule of values, so.
Yeah, exactly.
I'm sure they can find a way to mask the, uh,
Oh sure, yeah, it's usually done.
Exactly, no, we'd appreciate that, thank you. So that brings a question to my mind and I don't know if we can answer it right now and hopefully we can put it together. And that is the special conditions that we put together, um, back in October, um, that were signed by this. And what we're dealing with is number four and number seven. Uh, how do we handle those special conditions?
Well, didn't, didn't Ken say, you may point it out that the, the timing was, was left kind of vague, so that kind of fits right in with what we're talking about, doesn't it?
Yeah, I thought, that's the way I read it. It says the meetings required and other things, but it doesn't specify the time when it has to happen in the sequence, but.
Okay.
I mean, that's me, that's, everyone else has a thought, of course.
I think you're right, but obviously we.
So just on the basic level, what, 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 what action is requested or required of us here to, to, I'm guessing.
Yeah, I'm requesting that you authorize however you're going to do the signing, whether you're going to come in and sign it individually or whether, here it is, I got the Mylar right here, ready to go, I can have it on your doorstep in three minutes. Whether you sign it individually or whether you've authorized your chairman to do the signing or your, your, uh, plant, town planner do the signing, however the board wants to do it. But ask you to sign the plan so we can get it recorded.
The plan is not yet recorded, Jonathan, the plan that we accepted back in October?
It's not yet signed, so we haven't been able to.
But we don't have to make a, a formal finding regarding number four and number seven first? No, we don't, or do we?
I don't think so, no. I mean, it's, it's in your decision, there's no finding necessarily, it's in your decision.
And that, and, uh, the applicant is, is comfortable with the language that we want to add to number seven on the covenant?
Yeah, we can get the covenant revised to do that.
Exactly. So, um, and you now explained to me why the, uh, plan booking page is blank.
That's right.
Yeah, I didn't realize that.
On the record, yeah, so you can't get it to you.
And, um, so what I would like to do is, yes, let's get the Mylar into the office to have it signed. I am local these days, I won't be back in town tomorrow till very late in the day. I don't know if I can do it tomorrow, but I can get it done in the next couple of days, uh, if we want.
Can we make appointments with Heather to, for the signing, do each of us to make arrangements to go to city hall and sign?
Yeah, I'd make a suggestion that we do that and sign the A and R at the same time, because we gotta sign that one too.
Okay.
And a copy of this, uh, revised covenant with the language added, basically.
I think that's a request for you guys.
We don't need to sign that, we need to sign that.
But the one we got was already signed by you guys.
It was, so we'll have to revise it and get it re-signed and re-notarized.
And then give, the, the signature block for the planning board says acceptance by the majority of the planning board.
Yeah, that's right, I didn't see that. All right, so we'll get that in, I'll get that into you as well. I should be able to get that tomorrow for you.
So is, is signing this endorsement of the plan?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's it, yeah.
So prior.
Step in your approval which you gave last, whatever, November.
October. So prior, prior to the endorsement, we have these seven steps. And unless, and seven says shall file a bond. Do we need, it sounds like, you know, I'm kind of with Jonathan or where you were headed Jonathan, that we need to amend this decision?
That's what I was getting at, I was wondering if we need to do that?
If we're going to proceed. So I believe, if I may, that the special conditions in the decision do not have a timeframe on them.
Except, he's right, it says prior to endorsing the plan.
How do we handle that? Handle it with minutes in the meeting, do we have to actually go and do, redo a decision? Mark, can, any, uh, recommendations?
That's a good question, I think that's a question for council.
I would request that we don't take another week or two to get council to give us an opinion on this because it's just too bad. Resolution to this.
Thank, thank you Calvin, and I was going to, the question I was going to ask was how quickly we can turn this around. I don't know the answer to that, Cal. You guys have faith, you really gotta have a little bit of faith right now, okay? And we, I, I think the board is in, uh, I'm going to guess that the board's in agreement with doing this. I just created, I, I'm going to send you a word document and I also created a PDF of the language from Mr. Diskin. I'll send that to you so you can copy and put it in the covenant for convenience for you guys. Um, and I'll send it out to the rest of the board members also.
And since we haven't gone on record with these plans yet, I think you do have the option, if you wanted to revise the special conditions to allow us to do the covenant, that would be the easier thing to do. And that's what I was getting at rather than asking town council what she, she wants you to do or not do. I think you could, you could revise this to allow that.
I think we're allowed to amend the decision, if that's the right, the correct word, rather than revise the decision.
Yeah, it's in the moment.
Right.
So I'd make a motion, I'd make a motion that the planning board amend item seven of the decision for the John Cowell reserve under section E, seven under E. And strike that line at the moment. And replace it with a new line that says on this date that we're talking about. Or add seven A or seven B or some other line.
Okay, you can, so you say special conditions, it starts out with E prior to planning board endorsement of the plan?
Right.
Number seven.
Right, seven, E, seven.
Thank you.
Be amended.
Yeah, you could simply say, uh,
Eliminate.
Signing of a covenant or, signing of a covenant or filing of a bond.
No, I'd like it to say that, I'd like to amend it to say that the, instead of saying the applicant shall file a bond, meaning right now, the applicant shall file a bond in the future if required. To a date uncertain, something like that, you know, during the project. And I'm not sure exactly how the language would go, but trying to take the requirement of doing it before endorsement and making it during the project rather than before endorsement, that's the intent.
Ken, so my suggestion would be that we move number seven to a different part of the special conditions. Whether it be prior to, uh, certificate of occupancy being issued or prior to building permits for subdivisions, but move it to similar sections instead of striking it altogether and rewording it because you're still under that prior to endorsement.
It actually would be appropriate under prior to billing permits because the covenant requires that you have to, you can't get a billing permit until either you complete everything or you file a bond, so.
So it sounds to me we move it from section E seven to section G four.
Thank you, I like that.
I think that'd work.
Okay, let's make sure we've got the language correct.
I think that would be considered a de minimis change to the decision.
Are we leaving it as a bond or are we adding the word covenant in there as well?
No.
Hold on, hold on guys. Ken, please, what are you going to say?
I was going to say that I think the, I'm going to ask Mark Ashenbo's opinion, but I thought the language would stay the same and just move to a different location.
I just wanted to double check that.
H.
Yeah.
Or G, I guess it is G, excuse me.
G, yeah.
I would, so I've marked this up, so it's going to read, it's going to read, so we're going to strike it out of special conditions, section E prior to planning board endorsement of the plan and move it to section G entitled prior to any building permits being issued for homes in the subdivision. And it will be G, section G, paragraph four. And the language will be the same, the applicant shall file a bond of the town of Air but they're not to be determined by the departments of public works superintendent and mayor town planner, period. That takes care of.
So that to complicate things. We also want to move number four.
I was getting, Calvin, you, you, you young guys got to give me a chance, Cal. Come on. Please, go ahead.
Just to be clear, where we're still saying we, we want the meeting with the, uh, DPW director to determine the bond amount, we're just saying the bonding will be determined later prior to building permits, correct?
Yes. And where I, where I'm hanging up on number four is we don't have an engineer to meet with. And I gotta be honest with you guys, in the time of COVID, it's hard as heck to put a, dig in the meetings. We can go ahead and hash these things out. But, um, it almost sounds to me like number four needs to get moved also.
Well, number four says guarantee requirements. It's not saying set the amount of the bond. It says what is required, that, that bullet list that, uh, Mr. Wetzel put together is the agreed requirements or some other framework. Then that's, that's established, we don't need to know, we don't need to resolve what the amount is.
Alright.
I, I wouldn't say it's the agreed thing, that was, you know, DPW put forward their proposal and, uh, you know, is yet to be agreed upon by all parties.
Can I, can I make a suggestion? I think the agreement with the DPW is really not meaningful at this stage because we're not going to post a bond for the whole thing. Meeting with the DPW is meaningful when we go to post the bond for the final project that has not yet been constructed and at that time we absolutely will want to meet with him and go through the construction and have him do that. But the board, the board wanted to have his overall estimate, which you've got. And I suggest that by giving what Mr. Diskin had asked for, the highest price of our estimates, that that would then give you a good framework that you can work from in the future when it comes time to decide the actual bonding amounts that we're going to post a bond for under item four.
Okay, the question, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Diskin.
So, under that item four, you see it's got, it says, uh, meet with the public works and stupid town planner to establish bonding slash performance guarantee. Could we, is there a broad definition of a performance guarantee can also include a covenant? That was my.
Yeah, I understand that.
That was Nate's point, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, so in that case, we're, we're, we're good with leaving it where it is, I guess is what we think. Is that what you think, Nathan?
Well, it, the word I, what I've heard is, is, is that the DPW is not in agreement and it's, you know, unfortunate they're not here.
Well, actually, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm going to jump in for a second here, okay? Here's what I'm sticking on, prior to us endorsing the plan, this, this meeting had to have happened. It hasn't. For whatever reasons, it hasn't.
To meet with the town planner?
Well, I, I would tell you that, that the, our, our principal, Tim, uh, Tim Madigan has had meetings over the phone with Mr. Madigan over this issue a number of times and they have discussed those numbers. So from, I mean, technically you could say that has happened because it's happened over the phone and we're, we're talking about not doing in-person meetings now. So I think those discussions have actually happened. I know it did, I know that he talked to him today. Uh, he is the applicant himself.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not privy to that information. I do know that Mr. Madigan and Mr. Wetzel do speak. I just don't know what, okay. So, your, your, your point, I guess, I guess the point I'm going to ask you, Calz, you want, we moved seven into section G. And you brought up moving section four.
But I, yeah, I did before, before Nathan pointed out the, uh, the performance guarantee, the broader performance guarantee piece of it. So, and I'm kind of in between, I think it go your way.
Because it occurs to me that if that goes into, um, section F prior to site excavation, we can move this forward tonight and it's covered.
I, I'm confused, what binds the applicant to fulfilling the covenant though? If there's no language regarding the covenant, I, that, that's the missing piece for me here.
What do you mean by no language? What are you referring to as no language, Jonathan?
Well, we're saying there were these special conditions. We've been asked to say, wait, forget the bond, we're going to go with the covenant. But don't we need to have language somewhere saying, you know, the, prior to endorsement, we're going to have this signed covenant with the amendments we just, with that amended sentence that we just discussed at this meeting?
I'm going to say that you don't, Jonathan, because under, under, under state law, it's a requirement under state law that prior to your endorsement of the plan, we have to present either a covenant, a bond, or a deposit, or a tri-party agreement. So it's state law, you, I mean, you can put it in there, but you don't really need.
No, I mean, but we don't have the covenant.
We do.
If you want me to sign tomorrow, the covenant, but you're going to add a sentence to it? We got that?
We'll get you that, yeah, before you sign it, yes.
Yeah, well, it'll be simultaneous, we'll, we'll sign the covenant and the plan at the same time.
Okay, so we'll sign the covenant as revised and then, okay, fine. All right, I just wanted to be sure that all the pieces were there, all right?
Yeah, I think they are.
I appreciate it. So if four is troublesome sitting where it is, moving it into prior divisions of the site excavation permit, would that work?
No, because you're not going to do the bond until you actually do the construction, right? So it's going to be the, it's going to be the, uh, the building permit again.
Back into G, so in G, so G goes from G one, two and three to G one, two, three. And I would suggest four becomes G four and seven becomes G five.
Yeah.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Diskin.
I don't see why we can't, if we just worked out the, the details, that's why I asked if we could consider the covenant the same as the performance guarantee. If we just worked out the details of the covenant and we haven't endorsed the plan and we do it simultaneous, isn't that, why don't we just leave it where it is? Then any project we do in the future would be basically requiring ourselves to do the same thing as a board and, and the applicant, that we would make, have this discussion just before we endorse a plan. And by that point in time, we'd know whether it's a, a bond or a covenant or whatever the other language might be.
Okay. I think I follow Zevian there.
That's traditionally how it's done too, and I think you're right, I think you could leave it that way.
Okay, so E four stays as you. Okay, so E four stays as E four, G seven moves to, I'm sorry, E seven moves to G four. I sound like I'm playing Battleship here. Okay. So to wrap it all up in this, if there is no other discussion. On issues with the covenant for the. Special condition, the decision. We will get the language to Mr. Goldsmith. He will rewrite the covenant with the friendly language. I'll share that language with everybody on the board. We will modify, we will amend, we will amend. The. Decision to move E seven to G four.
Again, I think that's, it's important to understand. I think that's a de minimis. Change to the decision. So you don't have to worry about reopening public hearings or anything like that. I think it's considered a de minimis change.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, please, Mr. Diskin.
Do you have any comment for Mr. Oshinbo on this activity? Does he concur with our? He sits there quietly, you know, as we ponder here.
I had a similar question, Ken. Thank you for asking.
Yeah, I'm trying to keep up with all the different changes. I, I like it. I like moving more to G personally. I don't think it. It just thinks I'd rather see four and seven in G ties to the building permits. That's just how I feel about it.
Because we don't, we don't have record. Of four being completed.
No, and my understanding is when Mr. Madigan met with. Was regarding technical aspects of the subdivision, I don't believe they discussed. The performance guarantee.
When he met with Nick from our office, that's correct, they did not talk about performance guarantees, but. Mr. Madigan did in fact talk about the performance guarantees. Or whatever that's worth. I don't disagree. I think it can go either place. I think you're covered. By state law for the covenant. So I, I think you're good either way.
Could we make it simple by adding? I guess I can't get through the fact that the performance guaranteed word means exactly the same as covenant. And does, if it doesn't mean that same, maybe we should amend that by adding the word covenant.
A performance guarantee is an umbrella term that refers also.
Okay, so in essence, if Nathan said we haven't agreed to. The covenant, but I thought we were going to vote to agree to the covenant and sign the covenant one minute before we sign endorsed the plan.
Yes.
That's what I thought.
Then the sequence would be correct. Am I wrong, Nathan?
Well, it says the superintendent of public works. So what is, what is our? What is our role and are we superseding the superintendent?
He's an advisor to you with your decision.
Right. Well, that's why I felt that it should be, four and seven should be moved to section G so that it's, you know, clear as day that it's prior to building permits being issued. That's all.
Would like that, I guess.
Yeah, I think that, I'll be honest, I think it's cleaner in the long run. It's going to make, it's going to assuage more concerns. So especially this is E is going, E is going to change to one, two, three. Four is going to get moved to G as G four. Five will be numbered as four for E, six will be renumbered as five for E, and seven will be moved to G as G five. Somebody say it, you sunk my.
I'm not on board with that.
Okay.
I think four, if it could move, should move to issuance of the site excavation permit on the property, move to F. That's when you're going to need the bond or anything discussion before you tear up the trees and that's when the schedule of values comes into play, not at building permits. But in four.
You're not going to post, you're not going to post the actual bond until.
No, but you'll, you'll agree on what you're going to do by that.
Right.
You know.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I'm trying, I'm struggling on Zoom to have a conversation with my fellow board members and I was looking forward to hearing what Nathan had to say. So could we call some order to the fact that? Board members are having a discussion and that the whole group is participating?
I'm sorry.
I just request, I'm struggling to keep up with the conversation due to the amount of interruptions. Sorry, Nathan, did you actually finish the statement? I couldn't follow.
Well, I was jumping in, so.
I'm just trying to keep up. It feels a little like.
Well, Chair, bring us, I, I just want to make the point that four doesn't talk about, my understanding is it doesn't talk about the amount of the bond. So I, I agree, and in section F, you don't have to know the bond amount, but in section F, I agree with you, Ken. That we need to know the context. The requirements of what, what the bond's going to cover. And so I, I agree and I think. If we move four down the road, it should go to. To F and not to G.
Any other comments on that? I'm perfectly fine with putting it in F or in. Basically, what we want to do is we want to make sure that the meeting takes place, correct? We want to make sure the meeting takes place in such a format that we're comfortable as a board. That the amounts are being discussed and not jammed through, correct? It sounds to me like moving. E four to F five. Would assuage the concerns of the board. Am I correct?
Would dissuade my concerns.
Uh, yeah. Sorry, I'm out of turn, but yeah, I concur that moving it to F makes sense.
Okay. So let's move E four to F five. G seven. To G four. I still think this would probably fall under minimal changes or de minimis changes to this document. How soon can we get the document redone for signature?
I have it done now.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Oh, Heather.
That's quick. I don't have, Calvin, I don't happen to have your email address handy, so I haven't been able to send that off to you all. This real-time stuff's pretty cool.
That's all right. I don't have changes made yet either.
That's okay. So what I'll do is I'll forward the changes for the covenant that we agreed upon. Okay. Any further discussion on either, on any of these issues or any other issues on the covenant or the. Decision, special conditions?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Diskin.
How do we? Move this to, get this to a motion, change the amending of the decision, I guess, is the, the language of the motion and the vote. Is needed next, I believe. We haven't got a valid motion, right, at this point in time?
We've been, it's almost like we've been rolled up our, we rolled up our sleeves and got some work done. And now we need to put a motion together. That's how I see it. Um, and I'm happy to take a shot at our motion if you all want. I've been trying to keep track of this and I'll go through it slowly. That, is that okay with the board?
Yes, yes. Just one, one question.
Yes.
And that is, you know, this notice. The agenda notice went out on Friday. It was not a public hearing per se, but a discussion. We didn't necessarily, we didn't open this, I think, with a, with a, with a vote. This was more informal. But now it's turned. Formal. And so. Have we, it was more for Mark and Heather, Mr. Chair, if, if. Have we? Are we following the rules, I think, kind of where Ken was going to?
Have we broken any rules, right, Nathan? Mark, do you want to speak to that?
I do not believe so. I, I tend to agree that as long as the motion. References the prior approval, October. Two thousand nineteen, that, and, and the motion covers the, the reasons why the planning board is doing this. And it goes on the record, you know, the, it really doesn't change the decision. Or any physical aspect of the subdivision plan.
And, and to be honest with you, Nathan, and the rest of the board. When we did the notice of decision, we did not. Foresee that it would not be the developer sitting in front of us. At this point in time. With the engineer. Okay?
Typically, decisions are done outside of meetings and then. With all the discussion items points in, in respect to that. All we did was move items from one section to another. We didn't change any of the wording. So nothing changed the decision except for where they lie in that decision. There was no additional words added to it. So I think we're fine. And it will be referenced as amended.
So I'm going to make a motion. To amend the notice of decision. Of October ninth, twenty nineteen of the town of air, office of, planning board of the town of air. The motion is to move under special conditions, section E, prior to planning board endorsement of the plan. Paragraph four. Move that to section F prior to the issuance of a site activation permit on the property and make it paragraph five. Additionally. Under section E, prior to planning board endorsement of the plan. Paragraph seven. Move that to section G. Prior to any building permits being issued for homes in the subdivisions and number it number four. That's the motion for amending the decision. Go second.
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 Thank you. Any further discussion on this? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. The other motion, and the chair will make the motion for this also if it's okay with the board, and that is that we'll ask the applicant. To adjust the language. In the covenant. Section two. Paragraph seven. To include the sentence that we are providing with the applicant. Will provide the sentence that we, to the applicant. It will also provide as a record, as part of the record of the meeting.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Thank you. The logistics of this are that. The milers are ready. The covenant will be ready as soon as you can get it to us, Calvin. Please, Cal, please, it was already. Mark and Heather's already done, Heather has already. Done the changes to the notice of decision. You'll get that to the town, to the. You get that, you get that taken care of internally at the, at the town hall, please?
When I, when I deliver the miler, I'll have that in hand.
Thank, thank you. And Heather, what I, I would ask that as soon as the pieces are paper are in hand. That you reach out to the board. And I would ask you all to check your email, but I got to tell you, if you could make a phone call, that'd be helpful. Over the next couple of days, I will be pretty much out of, I will be away from my computer during the day for the next couple of days, but I will make it an absolute point. To swing by and take care of that.
Mr. Chairman, question?
Uh, Mr. Goldsmith, yes.
How many copies, how many paper copies of the subdivision plans? Do you folks want to sign?
Don't we typically sign three paper, one miler? Am I correct? Heather?
Yes, we usually do three paper and one miler and that, so the. We can have at least, at least two copies in-house, so it depends on how many that the applicant would like. I prefer to keep two paper copies in the office.
Okay, and typically it's the legal sheet, the miler, the single legal sheet that goes on record at the registry.
Yep.
These, so that we'll be bringing the one miler, we'll bring you three paper copies of the entire set.
Appreciate that. Um, can I ask a favor, Calvin?
Certainly.
Could I get a smaller than regular size paper set?
Sure.
Or can we, I don't think you make it in-house or not, but if you could deliver that, it'd be great. I just, and, and I meant to ask this question before. Nothing's changed since the October approval. Of the plan set?
The only thing that changed is what we're required to change under the decision.
Thank you. Good enough. Anything further on this item from any of the members of the board?
One quick question. So did you make a motion to accept, to ascend the changes to the covenant to Cal, but you didn't make a motion to accept that covenant? Are we doing that later along with the signing, approving and signing of the plans? I think there should be two motions as well.
We didn't vote on the covenant, did we?
No, you just made a motion to send the changes to them.
Well, anyway, it's moved and seconded to vote on the change of the covenant with the language that has been provided to the applicant. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. And do we need a motion to sign the miler?
We need a motion to approve the covenant with the changes. You only made a motion to send the changes. To Calvin. You didn't say to approve the covenant itself.
Some of these make a motion. Motion to approve the covenant with the changes.
So moved.
So moved. Second, please?
Second.
Thank you. Moved and seconded. All in fa- I need further discussion. Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
The making of laws should never be witnessed by anybody. Thank you very much. I have a feeling that brings us to the end of our discussion regarding this.
Do we need to endorse?
Yes.
Go ahead, Nathan.
Do we need to endorse the plan? If we're going to go sign it, right?
You need a motion to endorse the plan.
We do?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Nathan.
For the motion? Oh, I've got. Question. Which is, has, has, for Mark, has, has Mark gone through and combed through now the remaining? Five. Are all five of these conditions met?
Of the special conditions under E?
Correct.
We actually covered that in our, in our cover letter when we submitted it. That all five of those have been done. I can walk through them if you'd like quickly.
Oh, hold on, please, Cal.
I'm looking for Mark's.
Uh, yeah, the only thing that needs to be finalized is the conservation easement or conservation restriction. But that, that is something that is going to take a little bit more time to finalize.
And the conservation restriction is outside of the purview at this point of the planning board, correct?
Right, that's, they're, they're proposing that the town through the conservation commission be the grantee or the manager of the conservation restriction.
Yep.
So I think those, that discussion will take place. In the near future.
I actually thought we had already had that discussion months ago.
Right, but they're still, still not signed.
I'm going to go on, I'm going to go on record as the chair. I'm going to interrupt you all at this point and say that. We did have this discussion in the meetings back in October. And I believe the board found that it was not an undue amount of work. For the town to become the grantee and for the conservation commission to be the overseer of whether or not. The work was done on an annual basis. And that seems to be a question that is unfortunately outside of the purview of the board right now. But that was our recommendation, if I remember correctly. And that's where that stands.
And conservation did agree to that with the proviso that we provide that the homeowners association will hold the title to the property. Conservation will hold the conservation restriction. And the homeowners association, association will provide. A yearly fee to the town for the maintenance of it. So the town's not in the hook for paying that.
Yeah, and it's my understanding that those details should be in the conservation restriction document itself and they, they are not in the document right now, but I don't believe that should hold up at this stage of things, but. So you know, you know, conservation commission will be wanting to discuss that further.
Okay. Nathan, are you satisfied?
Yeah, I read number one as submit the details.
Details, yeah.
And that's, that's it. The details. Mark, have the details been submitted?
Yeah, they submitted a conservation restriction. There are some details that need to be, fine details that need to be worked out, but I would say the, the body of it is there.
Right.
It's, you know, it's a fine tuning that needs to take place.
Right, and it says resolve all matters relating to the CR will continue in, in number one.
I have a comment, Mr. Chairman.
Please do.
At the very end of the document under, and I'm not sure why there's, there's duplication, but under H, which is prior to certificate of occupancy being issued. We added number two back there when we talked about the conservation restriction, which basically says prior to this. But this is what it says, prior to the first certificate of occupancy being issued, a final copy of the conservation restriction. Shall be filed with the air town planner and the town clerk and appropriate county, state departments as required by applicable statute. I always thought that that was really our. Strength of the, the decision and the timing of the conservation restriction. Insofar as it gave them a chance to get going and, and resolve all the legal that's required in the conservation restriction. Yet, we wouldn't give them a certificate of occupancy unless we basically knew that it was done by that time. So it gave a window to everybody to work out the. So it gave a window to everybody to work out the legal aspects and the final details of the restriction. And the important thing was it would get it before someone had their first occupancy permit.
Yeah.
Yep, that, that's correct, Ken, and, yeah, I meant to mention that, but you...
Thank you.
Yes.
Um, I've just been reminded that we're running out of time, too. So. Nathan, and I don't want to, we will continue to get stuff done until we are happy. I'll take the heat, whatever heat there is, unfortunately, say. So Nathan, are you happy that the conservation, the conservation restriction was always assumed to take a year or so? But it was never, I don't believe it was ever contemplated to hold up to actual project from beginning.
Right, the discussion we had in October was to make progress on it, and we're making progress. The details have been submitted.
Good, thank you. So you're happy?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, so I my brain's turned to mush. Whether or not actually do we need to take this aboard right now in order to get this accomplished?
Uh, well, you need to finalize the, make a motion to endorse
the, the, okay.
The revised notice of decision as, as you amended it previously.
And you have a motion, please? I'm sorry, Calvin?
And the plan.
Yeah, and the plan, exactly.
Oh, we did the decision.
We did the decision, we just need the plan.
So a motion to endorse the plan, please?
A good motion to endorse the plans for John Carroll Reserve as 54 and 56 Littleton Road, as discussed in this meeting, July 28th, 2020.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you all. Is 90 minutes the limit we have for the meeting?
Uh, yes, until, until that is changed, it may change in the future to go up to two hours, and that's...
So I, that's going to, that's going to shut down the discussion regarding the planning board endorsement of the John Carroll Reserve subdivision. Calvin, thank you very much for working with us on this one. Moving on, I'm just going to honestly close the meeting in a moment. I just wanted to talk about a couple of things. Do you have any announcements, Mark?
Uh, the only thing I have is that the, Dan, the town engineer at DPW is working on stormwater regulations that the planning board needs to adopt. They're doing fine tuning of those, and they should be complete by the end of this week. As soon as I have the final version, I will send it to the board, and we would need to hold a public hearing on that, which will be anticipated for August 11th.
Thank you very much. I was wondering about that because actually, cleaning my desk after the day, I came across the ones I had made comments on, and I was wondering where that went.
Oh, if you have comments, please get them to Dan and myself this week.
I might just wait for you to send them to me because I have a feeling I've filed them at this point. Okay. Old and new business, one of the things I wanted to talk about is, do you have any, any old business people?
Go off tonight.
Thank you very much, Calvin.
Thank you. I appreciate your help.
Old business. I don't have time for it now. Mark will be sending it over to the office in the next week or so. Putting together a little list of the things we've worked on in the last four or five years so that we can keep a running tally of where we stand. It'll basically be project name, proponent, and where it stands so that we can get an update on a quarterly basis or bi-weekly or a monthly basis, something I think we all feel good about having. Things don't drop through the cracks. Jonathan, thank you very much for the work you did on the minutes. I think, Ken, you had some changes in the minutes also, or they all sat with you? I'm sorry, Ken?
I did almost one thing, I think, that's all, after Jonathan.
Okay. Have your corrections been submitted to Heather? Does the latest version that came back from Heather reflect all the changes you wanted to make, Jonathan? Did you get a chance to look at them?
I, I honestly didn't check her changes. I'm sorry.
So I'm going to push, I'm going to push approving the minutes until our next meeting, which is July 14th, okay?
Okay.
Anything else, guys?
I can save it for next time, but I have some ideas of communication improvements that might help us now that we're on Zoom instead of in the room. But again, in the time, we can talk about it another time.
I, I would love any suggestions at all. I don't do well in the backseat with nobody in the room with me.
Yeah, no, I think, I think it'll be an easy switch, and I think it'll help us, and I really appreciate everyone's input. So I, I think it'll help clarify so we can really hear from each other in a good way.
Fantastic. Having said all that, a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
So moved.
Thank you all. Seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye, aye.
Thanks for, everyone, for your hard work on all of these things.